We'll call the Monday, April 22th meeting of Dublin City Council back to order. Mike, could you lead us on the pledge?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. We have a special recognition that I'm going to hand over to Councilmember De Rosa to address with our Dublin Sea Dragons. Do we have any Sea Dragons in the audience? All right. Well, get your hands up real high. Dragons, there you go. All right. Kathy, take it away.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for being here. It is my pleasure to recognize some significant achievement, as I understand it, some record-setting achievement for the club this last year. Is that right? Yeah? So, I am going to go ahead and read a proclamation recognizing your achievements, and then I'm going to ask you guys to come up here and tell us a little bit about what you did. How's that sound? Is that good? Okay. You didn't know that part was coming, did you? Yeah. All right. Give me a second. So, whereas the Dublin Sea Dragons competed in the Junior Olympic Swim Meet at The Ohio State University, March 8th through 10th, placing third overall, which is the highest ever placed before, and whereas the Sea Dragons had four swimmers who collectively earned 19 individual state titles. Was there any left or anybody else? Yeah. Along with five relay state titles. And those outstanding athletes are Emily Brown, Benjamin Nader, Cameron Frazier, and Aiden Frazier. And whereas 12-year-old Emily earned six individual gold medals and one bronze, four individual team records, and was the third runner-up swimmer of the meet for all age groups for the girls. And whereas Benjamin, age 12, won seven individual gold medals and three relay gold medals, two individual state records, and six individual team records, and three relay records, and was the third runner-up of swimmer of the meet for all ages for the boys. And whereas Cameron, who also was 12, claimed four individual gold medals, three individual silver medals, three relay gold medals, five individual team records, and three relay records. And whereas Aiden, age 10, won two individual gold and two individual bronze medals, along with two relay gold medals. And whereas Emily and Benjamin were the high-point winners in their age categories with Cameron the runner-up. I now see why you didn't wear your medals because you couldn't have walked in with all that weight. And whereas, the state Junior Olympic Swim Team Meet is highly competitive, and nearly 1,000 qualifiers and 46 teams throughout Ohio participated. And therefore, I, him, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of the Dublin City Council, do hereby congratulate our community swim team, the Sea Dragons, on their outstanding accomplishments, and look forward to hearing about their continued success. Signed on this 22nd day of April 2019. Congratulations. So, who wants to come up? Or all of you come up and tell me a little bit about the team and your achievement?
Come on, don't be shy. You're all going to have to get up, so just go ahead and get up. There you go. We have appointed a leader.
Maybe you don't need it down so far.
What did you say? Okay, tell us a little bit about how big your team is, and a little bit about competing, and what was great about it.
Your name, too.
And your name.
My name is Benjamin Nader. And our team is, compared to a lot of the other teams, it's a smaller size, but it's a great team, and I love it. I would not trade my team for any other team. And it's fun competing with my team and my coaches. They make every second fun. And, sorry.
Are you ready to swim again?
Yes.
There you go.
Anybody else want to share stuff?
There we go. There we go.
Swimming is just a super awesome opportunity for all ages, to get involved and make new friends, and the coaches are amazing. It's all about having fun, not about winning or dropping times, it's just all about having fun, meeting new people, that's all that matters.
That's great. I know we got a bunch of proud parents. Do any of the parents want to, do we have a coach or anybody that wants to stand up and comment? I mean, we love, yeah. Well, why don't you guys come up here, and we'll get your picture taken. Come on, come on, come on, come on.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a lot of winning that Kathy just listed for us. A lot of winning. So, congratulations. We're really proud of, really proud of you guys. Onto our next special presentation, Stephen White. Where's my friend Stephen? There he is. Stephen, and a Dublin resident, and a brand-new father recently. About how old's your son now? 18 months, maybe?
About five months.
Five months. So.
Yeah, I know, right?
Stephen is the Vice President for External Affairs and Strategic Initiatives and Business Development for COSI. And we have had the COSI Science Festival Celebration of Learning that's going to be coming through our neck of the woods just next month, isn't it, Stephen?
That's right.
This is Stephen's brainchild. I know Dr. Holdley with the schools is going to be participating in a really fantastic thing, and we're just going to turn the floor over to Stephen to let him tell us about what's going on at COSI.
Thank you so much, Mayor Peterson. Ladies and gentlemen of Dublin City Council, thank you so much for allowing me to say a few words here today. As the mayor indicated, I am a resident here in Dublin, so thank you so much for your continued leadership in our city. But I'm here today on behalf of COSI. I'm here on behalf of Dr. Frederick Burtley, the President/CEO of COSI, who sends his regard here this evening, but from all the entire team at COSI, for a huge thank you to the City of Dublin. In about two weeks, one day, 13 hours, I don't know the exact number, but it's getting really close, we are going to be embarking on one of the largest science/technology events in Ohio history, and we're going to do it together. The vision and mission of COSI is to engage, inspire, and transform lives and communities by being the best partner in science/technology and industry learning. And the key word there is partner. We're excited to partner with the City of Dublin to bring science, fun science, hands-on learning, and experiential science right here to the Dublin community, and to provide the citizens of Dublin with free opportunities to engage around science/technology to help build a diverse future STEM workforce. So, I'm here today to, number one, offer a thank you on behalf of COSI. I want to especially thank the leadership of Mayor Peterson. He's been fantastic along this process. We met almost a year ago now, but I also want to thank our city manager, Dana McDaniel, who's done a fantastic job in kind of thinking, helping us ideate around, how can we leverage the amazing work that's being done here in the City of Dublin around STEM, science/technology, engineering, and math, and really deliver those great experiences to our community. We also want to thank Dr. Holdley, our superintendent here in Dublin, as well as Kyle Kreidler, who serves as our committee representative on behalf of the city, on behalf of the COSI Science Festival. So, those events, you know, the Science Festival is going to be a four-day event. It's going to take place from May 1st through the 4th of 2019. The first three days are intended to provide events right here in our own community, free events in our community, where regular folks can engage in the public. The final day is what we call the Big Science Celebration. That's where we shut down the roads around COSI, and we essentially have over 140 different 10-by-10 booths, all with hands-on experiences, that is free and open to the public, so folks can come down and enjoy a science/technology. Those first three days here in the City of Dublin, we're going to have several different events, including, as the mayor mentioned, the Celebration of Learning at the Emerald Campus. We're also going to have Ideas at the Intersection of Science and Design. And then we're also going to have a Citywide Star Party, where we're bringing telescopes and astronomers over to Glacier Ridge Metro Park. And then finally, we're going to be delivering some COSI wheels for free to the City of Dublin Schools, as well as an interactive video conferencing with an astronomer. So, that way, astronomer and an astronaut. So, that way, students can talk in real time with an astronaut, as well as learn about the science of ice cream with Jenny's Ice Cream herself, Jenny Bauer. The one thing I will mention is that we're really excited is that, for the first time in Ohio history, we're going to be bringing all NASA centers to the region, for the first time ever, all 10 NASA centers will be coming here for the Science Festival to engage the public for free. And so, with all of that, that's a lot, really quickly. Again, we wanted to thank the City of Dublin for its partnership. This is going to be an epic moment for our community, but we could not have done it without your incredibly hard work, and we will be back, and then after the Science Festival is over, to give you a recap and give you some metrics behind the amazing impact that we're hope, that we hope to have. We're expecting the impact of over 50,000 people over the span of those four days.
It is just so fantastic. And when we met last year down at COSI, which is a really fantastic facility down there, and they did, they made stuff explode and all kinds of stuff, and a bunch of central mayors from around central Ohio were in a room, and they said, you know, is any city here, can you think of a place in your community where you'd like to have a COSI stop on this science fair? And they had just opened Emerald Campus. I mean, so it was just absolutely perfect. And so then, Stephen, and how long have you been with COSI?
For about one year and two months.
Yeah, and they are so fortunate to have you. He is such a fantastic addition to their team.
Thank you.
And the production that they had, and then what they've been able to pull off with this science fair and this tour for four days in, what is it?
May 1st through the 4th.
1st through the 4th.
Yes.
And I think I seen a, isn't there like an advertisement for the Emerald Campus with the Times and all that stuff on there?
There is. And in fact, one of the grand marshals for the Science Festival is going to be Dublin's own, Dom Teeberry. And so, we thank the City of Dublin for their leadership in selecting Dom to be one of the grand marshals for the Science Festival. We're going to be lifting him up on stage at that Saturday event in front of 20,000 people, thanking him for the-
How could you possibly miss that?
In front of the, in front of the capacity crowd there, to acknowledge the amazing work he's done around technology, in particular around distracted driving, and helped to save lives. So, thank you for that as well.
Really fantastic. It's all really great stuff. Does the council have any questions? We're looking forward to it. We will be there. Thank you so much for including Dublin in your-
As a thank you, I have some Science Festival T-shirts for the city council members. If I could give this all to you?
Fantastic. You can give those right there.
Stephen, I'll bet Senator Portman's missing you.
I'm sure he is. I'm sure he is. COSI was very lucky to have landed you, Stephen.
Here, I'll hand these out. Thanks, buddy.
We'll see you there. And tickets aren't required or anything like that, or reservations? Don't you just show up during those days?
Show up.
It's almost like a fair where you walk around?
Yeah, it's all, it's all free. So, just show up, and enjoy, and have fun, and tell your neighbors to enjoy the festivities.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for coming in, Stephen. We really appreciate it. Okay, moving on to citizen comments. I don't know that we had anybody sign on, sign in. I know Dr. Wolf wants to comment on the OSU situation, but we have Ann and John Vogel from Dublinshire Drive, who have put down here at North Pool. I know that the North Pool has generated a fair amount of attention over the last several weeks, I guess, as we've gone through that process. There is a staff report in our packet that is reported to city council and recommends a going-forward sort of thing. Instead of waiting here to go through that at the end of our meeting, which could stretch long into the hour, I'm going to go ahead and move that item and that portion of the staff report up to now in the agenda. So, we're going to have Dana summarize where we are, and then Mr. and Mrs. Vogel, if you want to comment, you are more than welcome to come on up after we get sort of the ball rolling and set the stage. There is one thing that, ever since I've been around this government, and particularly this council, we'll do everything humanly possible to make sure people are treated fairly, that they've had an opportunity to be heard, and that we are informed before we make decisions. So, with those things in mind, Dana, is it okay if we go ahead and move up your staff report portion of the meeting to now?
Yes, sir. Okay. So, good evening, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to lift up the report regarding the Dublin Community Pool-North Project. You might recall that on April 2nd of this year, we facilitated, staff did, a public input session that focused on the background of this project, requests that we had to explore enclosure options, potential impacts to the neighboring residents, and then seeking feedback from the community as part of that process. There had been previous meetings before. We had left at your seats, a little bit of background when some of those different projects occurred. You might recall through your five-year capital improvement program process that there was a lot of discussion around, obviously, the replacement of this particular pool, of which you did budget within the five-year CIP for the replacement of the pool. And I'll use these words sort of "as-is." In other words, 25 meters, replacement of existing associated facilities, and the amenities that people are used to having and probably would modernize, if you will, those amenities associated with the pool as we're used to having it there. That's what your budget contemplated, and that's what you approved in your budget. Through that process, as we would always do as staff, we look at options. We were studying, is there the possibility of trying to put some sort of cap on that pool that might be seasonally based, that could get more use out of the pool, that might have been year-round? We didn't know what we didn't know going through that. We didn't really know what those results would be, what the cost would be, how it functions, what it looks like, what that impact might be. So, we went down through that process more for understanding than anything else. I think even at staff level, as we started going down that road, we kind of came to the realization pretty quick, it would be difficult to do that sort of thing at this particular location. But we wanted to study it nonetheless. And I think on the backside of that, the value of that has been that we better understand the difference between a normal outdoor pool, which we know very well because we've run a lot of those. We run an auditorium, i.e. the rec center. We understand that pretty well, what that takes, how costly that is. This sort of intermediate option, we never really explored or understood. So, it was a good process to go through. Staff and the architect did some analysis, visited a similar pool in North Carolina, I believe it was, just to, so we could look at one and touch it and see what it's like, and brought back some key information. I think that trip was particularly informative to us about whether or not this sort of thing could happen, where it could happen, and I think that's when we started to come to the realization that this is probably going to be a tough fit at that location. Nonetheless, we did have the session that I mentioned on April the 2nd. Thought it was a very good one. There were 85 members of the public present. Many of those were residents who were from the immediate neighborhood of the Dublin Community North Pool. We had members of the competitive swim community who may have interests regarding, you know, more enclosed-type pool, or maybe even a 50-meter pool. There were some other thoughts, and then other residents who just had general interest in the project overall. As a result of that meeting, a staff took the information from that, and by the way, in your staff report, you have the information about who all attended and some of the other information that was presented there. It's, as a result of that, we have come to a conclusion that we feel that, and the recommendations are provided in your memo, that we should first replace the existing pool as originally planned and budgeted in that location, and not pursue any kind of cover or anything like that, just to, really, it does involve scraping the existing pool. I want to be clear about that, and kind of rebuilding the pool, but it's supposed to be, these pools have a life cycle, and it's just past its life cycle, and it's time to replace it. So, we're going to replace that in kind, is the intent. So, we'd like to stick with that as planned in the budget and approved. Secondly, we want to implement the design process for that immediately, and of course, as we always do, we'll involve the public in that design process focused on that pool, that type of pool. No more discussion about enclosures or 50-meter pools. We're not recommending a 50-meter pool even at that site because that brings on, we think, other issues as well. So, that would, we think, address that issue of the Dublin Community North Pool, and we need to move out on that pretty quickly because we do want to stick to our timeframe relative to the budget and getting that replaced in a timely manner. And then the third item in the memo talks about recognizing the interests of the competitive swim community and the possibility of other swim needs within the community. And I want to be real clear, as a city, we feel we meet all the recreational needs of the community relative to swim programs. Between the community rec center and the outdoor pools, staff believes we meet that. It's when you bring in the other pressures to those pools, like high school swim teams and competitive swim, that's above and beyond the recreational level, is where we start to get pressure. So, we think we meet the basic mission. To do something more for competitive swim and the like needs to be a whole separate conversation. We would like, and we recommend, that the city be a voice in that room to talk about that. We have some lessons learned, information we've garnered through this process that we want to share with that swim community. I also want to lift up and recognize Virgil Temple, who's come forward as a leader among the swim community who is willing to help raise funding for that effort. So, I think that there are some ways. We've had conversations with Virgil, and Matt continues to meet with the competitive swim community about, you know, the type of discussion that might need to happen going forward. That sort of pool would not be at this location. Again, going to just replace what's there. Don't really know what other sites might be available around the city, if any, but that's something that we would look at in the context of what we've learned and as part of that discussion with that community. So, that's our recommendation. There's three of them. I think I outlined them within the, within the staff report, and I recommend adoption of those three recommendations.
Thank you, Dana. It would be my intention eventually to make a motion adopting the staff's recommendations in the memo, and obviously, council can vote on that as they see fit. Do, the Vogels, do you want to comment? We'll listen to whatever you have to hear, whatever you have to say for five minutes. But you've got to come all the way up here. There's the string that's attached. You've got to come all the way up here. At the podium, and just give us your name and address, please.
I guess, not really, in light of what he has said here tonight, assuming-
You just need your name and address.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
John Vogel, V.S. Victor O.G. E.L., Sr. I live at-
And your address is 5643 Dublinshire?
Right across from the school there.
Sure.
So, we're obviously impacted by what we were talking about initially. But in light of what he said, assuming council approves their recommendation and goes, you know, forward with the renovation and no four-story bubble on top of it, that, you know, it's pretty much what we were here. We hadn't gotten any notice, I don't know why, but we just happened to be out talking to our neighbor and found out what was going on, and thought we better come over. We've been here 20-some years, and I think the first time we've been here to the council meeting, so we wanted to come over and see what y'all do. Or don't do.
Well, thanks for coming in, Mr. Vogel. This is it, so we greatly appreciate you stopping in. So, maybe if you, did you have anything else?
Nope.
Stand by. Let's let this discussion run its course, and we'll see how this ends up. Does anybody else on council wish to comment? Kathy?
Dana, I want to thank you. I appreciate it. You know, when we put this in the plan last year, I appreciate staff's willingness to look at options. Because as we heard earlier today from our outstanding swimmers in this community, like our other sports, we have outstanding athletes in this city, and probably more need than we can facilitate in terms of athletics at all levels. And so, I know it was an opportunity to go out and look and really understand what it means to maybe potentially do something. I appreciate the realization that the particular location under discussion just doesn't work for the need. The real need from the competitive swimmer perspective just wasn't going to work in that community and the need for recreation. So, I appreciate that recommendation. I also appreciate the willingness for the city to also look at the needs of that competitive swimming group, and really see if we can't assist, be a voice, and help in ways to think about solutions for that, because that is also a need. So, I appreciate the recognition because I think what this does is allows us to both satisfy the need of the neighborhood and recognition of the neighborhood, and also lean forward and see what we can do for that group. So, Dana and Matt, and I appreciate your work on that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Mike.
Mayor, I heard from two former city council folks today who suggested that perhaps we should try and work jointly with the schools to come up with a solution here as well. It's really the 50-meter pool is one that's more of a competitive kind of nature, as I understand it, not truly recreation. So, we might want to think about that as reaching out and seeing if we can't do it. We've done many joint projects over the years, but that may be-
I think it's a great idea, and I can't imagine having a conversation like this without them being in part of the conversation, so. Jane, did you have something?
Yeah, you know, I also appreciate the fact that we're looking at options. One of the things that I think makes this Dublin community so special is that when we all come to the table together and talk about what we need to do to find solutions to an issue, we've got a great, we've got this great competitive athletic group in this town, and we just, how many gold and silver and bronze medal winners do we have in four seats in the front row? So, not only the schools, and our folks here at city staff and council members talking, neighbors, swim team members, neighboring communities might have the same needs. They may have swim competitive needs as well. I think getting together, we can come up with a solution, maybe, that will help move this forward. But I also appreciate the fact that listening to the residents was an important issue here and understanding that that wasn't going to be right for them. And if we can find a way, it kind of concerns me that some people didn't get notices, and I don't know why that is, but I would just hope that we look into that so people don't feel like they got left out of a notice, so.
You know, and I guess the only comment on this specific topic is to that, because they gave us a list of the things that were done to notify people of this, and it's, there's got to be 15 or 20 different things, website, Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, but Chris tells me, you know, a lot of people don't communicate with social media. But, you know, we sent out emails to all the pool passholders, the swim team participants, all these different things. So, and I get it, no matter how hard you try, there are going to be people that don't get notified. And so, I would, on the one hand, express appreciation to staff for going through all this, and I know there's been council members at all these meetings doing all of the effort, the outreach effort is really good. And if it turns out that there is a topic in the future that you don't get noticed on, I would hope that maybe you would think, well, maybe there's a reason why I didn't get that corrected as opposed to, you know, that we're trying to run roughshod over-
I think, if I may, Mayor, I think fundamentally, we just had a bulk mailing issue and timing. So, little lesson learned there that we've learned more than once, but we'll fix that and do more direct mailing as we go into the design process. But all those folks and all those tools will be leveraged to bring people in to participate in the design.
Chris?
Matt, following whatever happens with voting tonight, I know that at the April 2nd meeting, at least, we collected email addresses. And if we could just make sure that we, at a minimum, send the outcome of this meeting to all of those folks, that might really help us, and they could help be our voice of what took place here for those that aren't on Nextdoor or, you know, some of the other social media outlets.
We also have an opportunity to talk about this at the HOA Spring Meeting, too. There'll be quite a few HOA members there. We can talk about this there.
And that's tomorrow evening, so, yeah, good.
Okay, I will make a motion that we adopt the three staff recommendations as set forth in the staff memo that was in our packet for today's meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Onto the postponed items, ordinance 08-19, and I'm going to explain why Christina is now getting up and leaving the room. She was here, but has to recuse herself from this particular ordinance. So, she remained in the back of the room, but then we moved the pool discussion took place in the citizen comments, so we brought her in, but now she has to leave again because now we're done. So, we will wait for her to step out, and Ann, 08-
Authorizing conveyance of certain real property and the provision of certain incentives to the Ohio State University to induce it to establish a comprehensive ambulatory medical facility within the city, authorizing execution of a real estate purchase and sale contract, property reconvenance escrow agreement, and an economic development agreement.
She was here but has to recuse herself from this particular ordinance. So she remained in the back of the room, but then we moved the pool discussion took place in the citizen comments, so we brought her in, but now she has to leave again because now we're done. So we will wait for her to step out, and Anne, 08...
Authorizing conveyance of certain real property and the provision of certain incentives to the Ohio State University to induce it to establish a comprehensive ambulatory medical facility within the city, authorizing execution of a real estate purchase and sale contract, property reconvenance escrow agreement, and an economic development agreement.
Good evening, members of... Just to tee this up real quick, I just wanted to thank council for the guidance that they gave us when this was heard previously. We have gone back to the Ohio State University and had Med Center and had the discussion with the primary focus of how do we restructure the restriction piece. I want to thank them, and they're back again, and we'll make those introductions in a little bit, but want to thank the Ohio State University Med Center for some really out-of-the-box thinking and some compromise and discussion around how to reduce the amount of restriction to only a minimal few years as opposed to ongoing, and then some of the other items that Donna's now going to just go through and highlight some of those changes since you saw this last.
Good evening, members of council. Tonight, for your consideration, is the second reading of the economic development agreement between the city and the Ohio State University. As a reminder, parcel C, outlined in red on this map, is approximately 34 acres and shows the proposed site development plan. Based on the feedback we received in the first reading, we eliminated the deed restriction that concerned council. Instead, a new section has been added to the agreement, that's section 5.6, focusing on the cooperative development of the adjoining parcels. The only deed restriction that now applies is a height restriction on parcel D, which has been increased from 30 feet to 40 feet as a result of council input. Although you have the full agreement in your packets, the key changes in the agreement since the first reading are summarized here for your reference. Having already addressed the first bullet item, I'll continue with the changes in the use restrictions and future development. One important modification to the agreement includes the creation of a committee with representation from both OSU and the city with regular meetings to ensure continuity for the development of the campus. The committee will work collaboratively to jointly market parcels A, B, D, and E for future development that supports common objectives of economic development and the expansion of medical care to Dublin residents. The marketing effort would be funded by a $25,000 contribution from each party. Also, to assist in identifying potential uses in the adjoining parcels that are either complementary or competitive, OSU agrees to provide Dublin a list of initial uses no later than 180 days after the issuance of the certificate of final occupancy. The committee will have an ongoing role and at a minimum will remain in place until October 1st, 2026. Up to that time, OSU shall have the right to review and approve any development proposals consistent with section 5.6A, which approval shall not unreasonably be withheld. Any proposal brought forward would be subject to the city's review process should Dublin and OSU jointly agree to proceed with the development initiative. Further, on an annual basis, OSU agrees that for any entity they bring to the remainder of the campus, that would be parcels A, B, D, and E, that is exempt from real property taxes, OSU will pay or cause to be paid a service payment equal to the amount that would have been payable as if that entity were taxable under the tax increment financing ordinance. With that, I'd like to introduce Dan Like, Executive Director of Ambulatory Services, and Keith Myers, Vice President of Planning and Real Estate, who can assist in answering any questions you may have.
I'd also like to introduce Garth Datta, who is the Director of Ambulatory Facilities. So welcome, Garth. Good to have you here. Thanks.
Welcome, John. Appreciate you. Questions from council? Kathy?
I, thank you very... I had a question. The joint marketing agreement, that's innovative. Could you help me understand a little bit between the period today to the opening? If we, if we're not yet have a list of what would be considered competitive-type services, how are we going to market this and how are we going to encourage participation in that? So I know you guys have worked through that. Could you share a bit about that, please?
Sure. I would assume as we go through our regular weekly project meetings, probably they'll start more like every other week, but eventually there'll be weekly project meetings. As that committee meets and as that project team really starts to identify what programs will be in the facility, then it'll help us to understand what sort of competitive uses and other competing factors there may be. I can turn that over also to Mr. Like for his comment in terms of programming.
We are both also committed to just working together on what things, what other uses and the promotion of other uses that could be used there. So we'll spend some time developing a concept of marketing and then actually get out and promote marketing. Of course, the Ohio State University Med Center has its own depth and breadth of potential other uses that might be considered out there if they so, you know, deem that as a possibility. If anyone were to approach us relative to development and looking for a site that's medically related, we can certainly take them to this site and, you know, suggest that that's something to be considered. If it's, as we've mentioned in this short period of time, if it's directly competitive, we can have that discussion. I mean, otherwise, we're being approached pretty routinely about medical uses and where they might go. So we're always engaged with other users and looking for sites. Sometimes this kind of site, they may not want to be next to them as much as they may not want somebody next to them. So it kind of goes both ways. But we will put funding in together and develop a marketing concept.
Yeah, so that's what I'm trying to understand in between this period and that when we have the full list, how we would reconcile those types of potential opportunities on that particular piece of property.
Was that helpful, or do you need more information? I guess from the city's perspective, I want to be real clear. While we don't really go out and find these opportunities, usually they're coming to us. I mean, we, in our general economic development portfolio, might say, hey, there's land available, or we have these kind of incentives. People generally know that through experience, and they're usually working through a broker or they're working through a developer. And so if we become aware of those opportunities, we'll advance them. We may consider them not to be a good fit, and we won't even take them out there to begin with, but that's something that we can do. Working together, though, we can get out there and try to promote the availability of these properties.
So you're asking what happens now? What would happen if some company came in and said, I want to build this here?
On a Tuesday.
How do we, what list do we...
Yeah. Well, I thought I answered that. I'll try it again.
Thank you.
So if someone came forward, in fact, we've got one right now that we're working with that could have an interest there. So we would advance that. Right now, we're actually showing them other areas, but if they have an interest, we've told them about this location. If they have an interest, we will take them to the Ohio, we'll sit down with the Ohio State University, and we'll say, here is an opportunity. This is the kind of service that they intend to provide, and if it's not something they're intending to do, then it should not be unreasonably withheld. They would be able to go on there, and we would be able to advance the project. The Ohio State University Med Center generally knows the types of things they're going to be doing here, or they wouldn't be making this level of investment. But in fairness to them, I think no different than Ohio Health or anyone else we worked with, they don't want to go out and advertise what those are until they're up and running. So I don't recall Ohio Health actually being all that. I mean, they were the general hospital with some focus, but they've added other things that we don't always know about until they announce that they're adding them, so.
And even that conversation, Dana, sunsets after four years after opening?
That's correct.
So after that, it's not even...
Any restriction sunsets after the four years.
Got it. Okay. Jane?
Yeah, one of the things I would, I compliment the talking with Ohio State because it is much less restrictive than it was in the beginning. I also think that it's important that we've listed some complementary uses because this West Innovation District is to become a campus or a community. And so to begin to look at some of the things that we would like to see there invites the kind of development that is going to lift not only the Ohio State's Ambulatory Care Center, but hopefully will kickstart some of the other areas around. And I'm anxious to hear from Ohio State, you know, sort of the vision of what you hope this campus can do for the West Innovation District and the Dublin community in that area. But the fact that it is not perpetual, the fact that it is offering other uses, and the fact that we can have conversations about potential medical uses that, they're even listed here, dentistry, optometry, chiropractic services, there's many others, that we have a period of time that it changes, and then it's not just four years, it rolls every couple of years, too, doesn't it? There's something in the contract for each partial, is there?
The parcels, yeah, the parcels have, well, we align the restriction to that timeframe, so all of that terminates at the same time.
Right. So I think that has great potential for opportunity to develop around it.
The one thing I'd pick up on, I appreciate you using this word because it's, I did not, and it's important that we do lift this up, and that's the concept of complementary use. So rather than saying what we couldn't do, we went back and sort of reset the discussion around what we could do. And the idea of a joint working committee and joint marketing is about how do we bring things that are complementary to what's going on as opposed to focusing on what we can't do? That's similar to what we did at Ohio University. You know, in the sub-area 3, we called it, the land along the, around the interchange and the frontage along 33, you know, oh, you didn't want us to plop down another university next door. Well, we got that, but we are going to work together to bring uses that are complementary to the campus. They could be businesses or other uses that could help promote the development of the university. So we really look at the Med Center, in this case, as an anchor tenant on that, what really amounts to about 90 acres. So actually, less than that, about 70 acres. So 34 acres, thereabouts, will be sold to them for their Phase 1 and future Phase 2. Then to the east and to the west of that is really 15, two 15-acre strips. Actually, one of them is going to wind up being closer to 11 acres. So it's pretty limited on what you can do on that to begin with. But what we want are uses that are complementary to the anchor tenant, and that's our focus. That's our focus, to bring things that will lift up the whole area, so.
There's about 1,100 acres in total out there in land.
Oh, yeah, the West Innovation District's about 900 acres.
It's a lot of land still to be developed.
Right, much of which is undeveloped.
Dana, I have a question regarding the Avery Road, Shire Rings Road Roundabout on page 15 of the document in section 5.3. It talks about OSU contributing $1.25 million towards the construction of that roundabout. However, on Exhibit B, which outlines the payment structure, let me get to it here. Sorry, they're about 50 pages apart to scroll through here. Under the Shire Rings Road realignment, there is an estimated cost of $10,751,838. Does that include the roundabout? It does not. Angel shaking her head.
No.
Okay. So this is, Exhibit B says, "List of public improvements and cost contribution." And the Shire Rings Roundabout is not on this list, but it is on page 15 and 16 of the documents. So which is the prevailing document of really what the contributions are going to be?
We separated those out intentionally because as it relates to the Shire Rings Road realignment, there's a percentage contribution by the university, whereas with the Avery Road Roundabout...
It's 50%.
Right. Whereas with the Avery Road Roundabout construction, they've committed the $1.25 million, which also could be put towards the interchange at Post Road, potentially if that serves the city better than the intersection at Avery Road. Because sometimes money towards an interchange attracts more money. So I appreciate the university at least being a little bit flexible about that because they could, as well as many others, benefit from the interchange as well.
Okay, well, I don't know that what I'm hearing lines up with what I'm reading. It talks about OSU shall contribute a total not to exceed $1,250,000. And then it goes on to say, "The roundabout shall be bid and performed by Dublin on an open book basis with OSU having access to all cost information." The way I read this, it says that they are a 50% partner in the construction of that roundabout.
The 50% is just showing how Ohio State is going to pay that up to 1.25 million. So they'll pay 50% of that on the execution of a contract and 50% of the 1.25 million upon substantial completion. And we wanted to keep that different from the other infrastructure improvements because those were based on the 32.5% calculation.
So their total commitment on the roundabout is 1.25 million, of which has two payments of 50% each. We can, we'll double-check that language. We'll mark it and double-check it to make sure that that's not, that's our intent. Their total contribution to the roundabout project is 1.25 million, of which they'll pay 50% at a certain point and 50% at another point. 50% of the 1.25 million.
Okay. If, I just want to make sure that we're all understanding, is it 1.25 million dollars or is it 50% in two equal payments of 25 and 25? As the roundabout comes to completion, in which case, if that was something that we wanted to earmark the money for another location, then we wouldn't ever get it until after this was built. So it was just interesting to see, you know, the words versus the tables and...
Yeah, I understand exactly where you're headed. We'll make sure that's clear, that it's a contribution of 1.25 million, 50% of which is paid at a certain point, and then the other 50% of which is paid at a certain point because obviously they don't want to give us all the money upfront.
Right.
They want to make sure we're doing a project before they cut us a check. But then there's flexibility for that money, if the timing works out, and it may not, that that money could be shifted towards the interchange project.
But then you'd have to take the 50% and the 50% out because if you were going to use it for something else, you wouldn't get...
Well, like I said, it all depends on timing. And what we know is we may have the opportunity to attract more funding for the interchange project in the short run. But before we get to the point at which we would be committed on this project, bid it and so forth, we would know that, and if we don't know that by then, then we'll go ahead and have them contribute to the roundabout project.
If you'd look into that, I sure would appreciate it because I totally get what you're saying, and I appreciate that. That's a fantastic idea, but when I read that, that's not what it says to me.
Yeah, we'll double-check it. Thank you for lifting that up. Appreciate it.
Okay. Dr. Wolf?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am Claire Wolf. I am a 46-year Dublin resident at 5521 Indian Hill Road. I'm a physician, recently retired 47 years in private practice, private practice, private practice, and I'm here to speak about the section on ordinance 89 that, thank you, Mayor, you pointed out and which I read about in the paper. Because I, as a private physician, find it very upsetting to ever see the words "non-compete" in a contract. I think it is wrong. I think it's wrong for OSU to prevent it. I think it's wrong for Ohio Health. I think it's wrong for Mount Carmel. It's un-American. It's un-capitalistic. I think every entity should be able to compete on their services, on their physicians, without having, and I appreciate that we're going to be positive about all this and see how we can work together. But when I see "non-compete" language in here, I see an inability, for me, as a dying breed. And let me tell you, the private practice of medicine is rapidly dying. But there are a few people who might want to build an office building next door who are not employees of OSU or, you know, Ohio Health or Mount Carmel. And so I've noticed on the thing that they've got it down to four years now, but why have it at all? Why do they need "non-compete" in their contract? And so I just wanted to come and say that I hope the council will work with OSU to remove the language totally because I think if you're good, what do you need a "non-compete" clause for? So thank you for letting me say my thing, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wolf. We appreciate you coming in. Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, I will make them... No, I guess we can just vote. Anne?
Sorry. Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
You know, I'd just like to comment that a lot of these contracts are really pushed through a fine mesh in executive session where they can be discussed. And I don't care whether it's Red Street or any other thing, you know. And it looks like that we're making rapid jumping decisions here, and we're really not. This stuff is so discussed and beaten up and gone through with our lawyers that pretty much most of the glitches, all the glitches, I would say, by the time it's done are pretty much taken out of. I agree with, you know, it's the huge amount of capital that's being invested by Ohio State in this effort, sort of, and the fact that bringing us a hospital facility like this is, you know, wonderful and complimentary to our community. And we understand the amount of money you're putting into this and appreciate that. So thank you.
I would echo that, John. I agree with you, Dr. Wolf, that fundamentally is against my core to say not compete, but they have contracted that significantly from where they were. They've cleaned up a lot of the language. One of you guys that was here last time said you wanted to come up with an agreement we could all be happy about and feel good about. And on balance, balancing all of these things, I can feel good about this. So welcome to Dublin, I guess, is the next thing after that. Jane?
Yeah, I would just like to say, and I'd encourage Ohio State as well, you hear the citizen comment, you hear this from the private medical community, and there's justification for that. The larger hospitals have taken over a good portion of medical care these days, and there's great stress on private practices. I hope that the work that the staff and you have done to look at complementary uses and the chance to market this will give us all an opportunity, if it comes to the point, where we might have some sort of a group coming that is on the border one way or the other. In other words, let's try to keep our private medical physicians able to still utilize space and areas that here in the Dublin community, our people might want to use, and hopefully that in working together, we won't become restrictive and that a "non-compete" never is a word that we actually use. It's just working together to partner to lift this whole area and bring better healthcare to the community. So I ask you for that. Thank you.
Okay, great. And thanks to staff and Dana for all you guys did.
Well, again, I want to thank Ohio State University Med Center and all the hard work in putting this together. I think it's a very exciting project for something that's been a long-term vision for the city out there. So thank you for your support of that.
Perfect. Okay, second reading, public hearing on ordinances, ordinance 12-19.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Nexient LLC to induce it to lease a facility to locate an office and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, and authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Colleen?
Good evening, members of council. We have been working with Nexient, and unfortunately, they have hit an impasse with the building owner that they have been negotiating a lease on. So they have asked over the weekend that we table this second reading and vote this evening, and my staff will continue to work with them so that we can identify new real estate options, and hopefully we can bring this forward and have this land in Dublin.
I make a motion to table ordinance 12-19. Is there a second?
A second.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ordinance 13-19?
Adopting and enacting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Dublin, Ohio.
Jennifer?
Good evening. This supplement includes local legislation approved by Dublin City Council through 2018, end of 2018, and state legislation current through August 2, 2018. This is prepared by our codifiers, American Legal, and we have uploaded the entire supplement for your review. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Chris?
There appeared to be some markups on what was uploaded in our, so are those markups, are those changes that have been made or are being made?
These are all reflected if you go online to the American Legal website. So these revisions, while redlined, the revised version has reflected clean copy in the, on the codifier site.
And under the probationary period section of 33.43, it has a list of, it says that a promotion appointment or reinstatement would last six months probationary period with the exception of the employees listed in the following classifications. They have a one-year probationary period. And in light of just having a new interim chief, I noticed that chief, there was a police officer, police corporal, police sergeant, police lieutenant, but we did not have chief on that list. So that probationary period could only last for six months and could not last for one year?
Correct.
Is that what we want to do? I would think if we're a police officer, if we felt it was level, it was, rose to the level of having a probationary period of a year, I would think we would want the same flexibility in our chief that we would in a, for an officer, a corporal, sergeant, and a lieutenant. But I just, it just struck me because of where we are in a community right now that we don't have that flexibility.
I think a department head actually has different, which the chief position would be, has much less protection in the position than other positions have. So the city manager has a lot more leeway relative to department division heads and people of the different positions. Yeah, it's any, for the record, it's in the unclassified service. So the city manager has much more leeway relative to that.
It doesn't matter if it's in probation anymore.
It really doesn't.
All of our unclassified at-will positions, none of them are actually in probationary status because of that very nature of being in that category.
Okay. Was just noticeably absent there. And so then all of these other lined changes will be incorporated, because there was a number of them, I thought that were very good changes.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Ann?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. I make a motion to introduce ordinances 14-19 through 20-19 and waive council order to consider them together. Is there a second?
A second.
Ann?
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
And Ann, could you read the names and addresses, please?
Yes, the 14-19 is a, the name is George Ginger Shepherd and James I. Shepherd, 5556 Avery Road. 15-19 is Tuttle Partners Limited, located at 5701 Ebner Circle. 16-19 is John J. Quinn and Felicia Quinn, 5498 Avery Road. 17-19 is William Thomas and Linda Thomas, located at 5494 Caracourt. 18-19 is Charles Frye and Amy Frye, 5540 Caracourt. 19-19 is Christopher Freeman and Michelle Freeman, 5545 Caracourt. And 20-19 is the Village of Valgriffen Condominium, located along Avery Road.
Paul? Members of council, these ordinance, seven ordinances this evening before you provide for the acquisition of necessary right-of-way easements for the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard Extension and Avery Road Improvement Project. You may remember at the end of last year, I brought before you six acquisitions at that time, bringing our total of the 45 needed to 21. These seven now will bring us to a total of 28 acquisitions resolved. And I'll just quickly run through these acquisitions. So the first is from Tuttle Partners LLC, along Wilcox Road, parcel number 23. Then we also have the Quinn Property, parcel 28, the corner of Caracourt Road and Avery Road. Thomas Parcel, parcel number 33, at the northeast corner of Caracourt and Caracourt Road. And we move up Caracourt to the Frye Property, parcel number 40. And then the Freeman Property at the end of the cul-de-sac, that being parcel number 41. The Shepherd Property, along the east side of Avery Road, parcel 46. And then number seven would be the Villages of Valgriffen Condominiums, that being parcel 49. The city, through its acquisition agent, has come to mutually agreeable terms with these multiple property owners in connection with the project. Walked you through what those seven properties are. For the most part, we have come to agreement at the appraised value, with really the exception of the Quinn Property, which is a total take through negotiation with that property owner. Staff recommends adoption of these seven ordinances at the second reading and public hearing on May 6. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council?
Did anybody, did anyone donate their property?
They did not.
No one?
No. Well, yes, the city did.
Well, yeah. I assumed the left side of the town.
We did donate. We were very agreeable.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we'll see you back at the May 6th, council meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Ordinance 21-19.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Rusili Construction Company Incorporated to induce it to purchase a facility to locate an office and its associated operations and workforce, all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement. Introduction?
I'll introduce it. Kyle, you are not calling.
No.
It says calling right here, so. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Good evening, members of city council. Before you tonight is the EDA proposal to relocate Rusili Construction Company to Dublin. Rusili has been operating out of temporary space over the past few years and is ready to find their long-term office. Founded in 1945, Rusili Construction is a total building resource offering unparalleled service and value to their customers. Their in-house offerings include pre-construction, program management, construction management, design-build, design-assist, general contracting, trades, contracting, and construction consultation. The project would result in the relocation of 60 existing employees to Dublin. The company would be required to acquire a property within the city of Dublin for the agreement to take effect. The economic development agreement proposed by the city in total is $120,000 over the term of the agreement. The first four years would be a 15% performance incentive on withholdings between 2020 and 2023, and the following three years at 10%. As a result of the agreement, the city expects to net approximately $662,580 over the seven-year term. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council has regarding this agreement.
Any questions from council?
Kyle, this is tied to a purchase and not a lease.
Correct.
That's great. Thank you.
Kathy?
Yeah, thank you. One of the things I noticed in this agreement that I didn't see in other agreements, for instance, the one we just talked about, is there's not a mention of full-term equivalents. It says jobs. So there could be part-time jobs, full-time jobs, or was that a, is that intentional or is that a?
That was probably unintentional. They're full-time equivalent, W-2.
Yes, we should probably add that language to the particular agreement, so.
We have no way of validating that. So, but the thing I would point out about that, this is a headquarters company, which are relatively high-paying jobs. So we're always looking at the maximum payroll amount, so.
But we have it in some other ones, so that's just, was interesting, different in language. So just curious why FTEs versus jobs?
I'll check that.
I'm just, okay, thank you.
Any other?
Well, and I take it, we may use FTEs if we know that, like, for instance, the Ambulatory Care Center may have given us that as equivalents because they know that equivalent, whereas some other companies, I believe these are all full-time positions.
They are.
Okay.
Okay, just some consistency, I think, would be, thank you very much.
I have a quick question, and it's not particularly about this one, but about incentives in general. I noticed, I do notice that we always, when you consider these incentives, you usually consider it based on target withholdings and not necessarily on full-time or part-time. So you're basically looking at what the target withholdings would be when you calculate your incentives. And so that kind of creates a standard in many ways, doesn't it, for you? And how you?
Yes.
You view incentives. Okay, thank you.
And how we're able to track it.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thanks, Kyle. We'll see you back on May 6. Ordinance 22-19. Ann?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Community Space Development LLC to induce it to purchase a facility to locate offices therein, which will result in the creation of entrepreneurial opportunities and new jobs and employment opportunities, all within the city, and authorizing execution of an economic incentive agreement.
I'll introduce it. Kyle?
Thank you. So economic development has been in conversations with Cohatch over the past three years, and more recently got serious as the right real estate opportunity became available. Cohatch, for everyone's awareness, offers a mix of coworking, makerspace, meeting space, entertainment, and public markets. They specialize in rehabilitation of historic buildings in town centers to bring new life and energy into the community. They support local charities, along with social entrepreneurship in businesses, retail in the food industry. They currently have four locations around central Ohio, two in Worthington, one in Delaware, and are opening one at the Polaris Mall this weekend, along with two additional locations that are under construction. Per Cohatch's initial plans, they are looking to renovate the building located at 56 North High, currently operating as the Brazen Head, and would propose an additional 5,500 square feet of redevelopment to the rear of the lot for a total of approximately 10,000 square A partnership between Cohatch and the city of Dublin, in staff's opinion, could provide a unique opportunity to address some gaps in the market, specifically within historic Dublin. This site could provide a launching pad for homegrown retailers and makers in the community. Also, an opportunity for startup businesses would add that innovative flavor to historic Dublin that's currently being encouraged in Metro Office District, West Innovation District, and the Bridge Street District. As a part of this agreement for the city's investment, Cohatch has agreed to a number of items for this partnership, among which is the purchasing and locating of their concept to historic Dublin, generation of at least 12 private offices and verified headcount of 20 W-2 office employees, total private investment of $3 million into the project. Important to point out, and we, staff is understanding that this is important to city leadership, that the company must maintain the liquor license currently on site at the, for the proposed facility for the term of the agreement. Additionally, the company will operate or cause to be operated on evenings after 5:00 PM and on weekends, the facility to prepare and serve food or beverages directly to the public for the premise consumption, essentially adding to the nightlife kind of flavor that is currently being provided at that site. There's a number of different milestones that are tied to this agreement, and I'll go through those one by one. But essentially, the economic incentive agreement proposed by the city for Cohatch over the five years would be a total of $700,000, broken up into five payments of $140,000 per each year. For year one, upon the execution of the agreement, the agreement would help enable the acquisition of the property, along with plans to renovate the existing facility. In year two, the goal is to have that initial space open, currently home to Brazen Head, and approve plans for the rear existing renovated new facility to the rear of the property. In year three, generation of at least 12 private offices with verified headcount of 20 W-2 office tenant employees. In year four, to host an annual pitch startup competition with their private office space at least 80% occupied. And in year five, verification of a total investment of $3 million into the project and generation of at least $70,000 in city income tax receipts over the five years. It's important to point out, in the first two years, there are recourse measures built into the agreement to ensure that Cohatch does successfully get on their feet and meet the intent of the agreement. So with that, also, we'll have the owner of Cohatch at our next meeting to answer any additional questions, but I'd be happy to answer any initial questions.
Yes, I have some, Kyle. There, in the agreement, it states food or beverages. One, I think it's really important that this, that the space that's available after 5:00 being utilized for the public, for being able to have a pub that's open is great. But it said food or beverages, and I'm hoping that that doesn't mean just beverages, that the commercial kitchen would still be available to either be used as a commercial makerspace for catering, for private events. for private events. Not that I would expect a full restaurant, but I was hoping that there would be, it wouldn't be an and/or. I hope it's an and, food and beverage, so I don't know if that's clarified. The other thing, in visiting the other space in Worthington, I noticed that they had a public patio, and to be able to utilize the high-street side patio as public space would be ideal. Certainly, if there's a private event, that's different, but it would be nice to have that activated even in the daytime for public space. So those are a couple of questions that I had. I have a couple of comments about this, but I'll wait until I hear what other council members have to say.
Kyle, you know, is the intention to raise the building to the east or to remodel?
The intent would be to essentially demo that existing building and then rebuild now.
Okay. It was, in hearing your words, it sounded like they might be trying to repurpose the building that's there, and that would...
Be disappointing.
That would fall short of the finish line, I think, in our hopes for what would happen right there, that old concrete block building.
Anything else?
I had a...
Seeing nobody down there.
I had a thought or a couple. I, like a few of my fellow council members, had an opportunity to go visit the Cohatches, and it is my understanding and from what we saw, is that the intent is to really, I'm going to use cool language here, and pick up the vibe of the community or what the intent is and to revitalize. And, you know, what is interesting is we're continuing to see the rise of the gig economy of these very small entrepreneurs and having spaces for them to do innovative things and to be hatched, if you will, I think is very interesting. I would appreciate, and I think to Jane's point, is when they're here, talk a little bit more about the vision for what we see in that space, how we're going to use the patios to engage the street and some of those thoughts, because they did share some very interesting and innovative ideas, and each location being slightly different. I think that would help. And then, you know, around some of the language, it talked about the city jointly doing some programming with them and a variety of things. So, I would appreciate if they could share a little bit about what the visions they've found and what they're trying to achieve, say, two, three, four years. So, success would look like this for Cohatch in Dublin. And they were pretty articulate about what success would look like in their current locations. And I think as we see such a change in the workforce and the rise of these types of things, I think it would be good for us to have some conversation about what that vision is, particularly because this agreement says and expects us to be part of that solution too, and that partnership, which I think is kind of neat, so. Thank you.
I have one other thing I'd like to hear from them when they come. It talks about they're specializing in rehabbing historic buildings. I'd like to hear a little bit about their vision, because, you know, there was a huge undertaking to make that be an authentic Irish pub. You know, I too visited their other locations, and it wasn't restorative, but it was rehab, but it didn't restore, and so they looked more like in industrial spaces than they did, you know, a historic space, so. I would like to hear what their intentions are with that.
Kyle, I would also like to understand how they perform their market analysis, kind of across the board, how they choose their locations. I would be very interested to understand how they came about with the different locations that they have, including their request for Dublin.
Okay, anything else?
Just a couple other things. I think it's really important to point out, I obviously have a love for the historic district and historic preservation, and I think this is an opportunity, considering that the city is thinking about doing this, one has to ask the question, why would you put $700,000 into a building like this? Well, I think that there's always been this thought portrayed that either you have a historic preservation or you have economic development, you can't have both. But in this situation, I think you can have both. You can take a piece of history like this, an authentic piece, a landmark here in Dublin, and you can turn it into something, evolve it into something that contemporary uses that can be positive for the community. And as I sat down and kind of, point by point, looked at what this does, why we even would do this, I have to say, we're using preservation here as an economic tool. I think that's really important when we look at how we preserve the district. How can we take these old buildings and change them, evolve them, so that they're contemporary, that they're relevant, that they actually activate the district? I think Cohatch is offering that. It's very difficult in the historic district to create new small business. It's very hard to get someone to come in there and to put some money up front, rent a place for a year, and try to survive in the retail industry. It's just almost impossible. We have the opportunity to do anywhere from 12 to 20 of these in one space. That alone, to me, is startup. That's energizing the kinds of stuff that we're looking for in the historic district. I think that's a good point. The Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau is pushing very hard in their strategic plan to focus on tourism. And I think as we talk about this, many people travel to historic areas because they're heritage tourists, they're looking for authenticity, they're looking for something that they can't find in other cities. The ability to, and I would urge and almost demand that Cohatch preserves the Irish pub, because there aren't any others like it, and that's part of what we consider our sort of Irish heritage landmark. Many people come to Dublin just to see that pub. So, it hits another checkpoint here that I think that in historic preservation and economic development, that you maintain authenticity, but still evolve and have something interesting happening there. So to be able to use that for public space as well as private space is a good plus, I think. And then the last thing, I think that's really important here, is it's very difficult, I think, to create placemaking. You know, we talk about placemaking, things that bring community together and create social interactions, and if Cohatch is able to pull off the things that they talk about, to build businesses and to restore or preserve landmark places, have workshops and creative thought-sharing and events, you've then hit the placemaking bit that we, kind of is the abstract we look for. So, it's, even though we routinely offer incentives to create jobs and increase our income tax base, sometimes it's rare that we get the opportunity to do all of these things. Support local, one-of-a-kind businesses and one-of-a-kind products, incubate new places, create placemaking opportunities that advance tourism, community conversations promote that, social interaction. And most importantly, I think, this is an opportunity to strengthen our historic center, because it is an anchor there, and we've got a lot of new things going on, but I drove down there today, and I realized the energy and the people, Brazen Head had a full patio tonight. That kind of energy, preserving our sense of place, and being respectful and reusing a treasured landmark like the Brazen Head, I think is very, very important. So, if we can get to a point where Cohatch offers us the ability to preserve something special like that, and we can evolve it into something new and innovative and drive that kind of energy, I think that's worth citizen taxpayers' dollars. I do think that. So that's...
Thank you, Jane. Okay. We'll see you back on May 6th.
All right, thank you.
Resolution 24-19.
Adopting council goals for 2019, 2020. Need an introduction?
I'll introduce it. Chris, do you want to introduce?
I'd like to introduce. Yes, please, thank you.
Michelle?
Good evening, members of council. Before you this evening are two documents. The first is council's 2019 through 2020 goals, and we did receive some feedback regarding the goal statements number two and three on this, and we did make adjustments based on that feedback. The other document is council's retreat report from your February retreat. We are asking for adoption of both of these this evening, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Michelle, thanks very much. I appreciate the work on the goal statements. I might even want to push that envelope even a little further than you did on articulation of goals number two or three. So, goal number one, I think, goal number two now reads, provide for the growing commercial and residential broadband needs in the community, becoming the most connected, high-speed broadband city in the world. I'm still trying to, you know, the goal should be to help us create resources that residents don't necessarily have today. So, I would like us to be a little bit bolder on that. I think this is absolutely and particularly based on the last workshop we had, certainly a potential step. But we talked at that last workshop about creating a smart city future vision and strategy, and I would like us to see that goal be more, have a bigger vision goal. So, again, I just put this out there as a straw man, is to create a smart city future vision and strategy that would include this type of stuff. I think that's what we talked about, I'll defer to my colleagues here. And then, the second one, which it talks about capitalizing on emerging economics and data, et cetera, so forth, and I think what we're really saying is here is we want a strategy that deliver better service and safety through better data and analytics. So, and it's in here, down in the sub, I just think we need to elevate why we're doing this work, and we're going to invest in data and we're going to invest in analytics, because we want to continue to drive service and safety through, you know, what we can. So, again, I'm trying to see if we can't just lift up the vision part of those goals a little bit more than, again, they feel more pragmatic than they do directional to me still in this, so. That would be my request. I don't know what my colleagues...
I would agree particularly on goal number two is, I don't necessarily want to settle for the options that are available to us. I don't think that's what this council wants. I think we want to strive to innovate and develop and lead in this connectivity, particularly, you know, we have in our commercial spaces and to do likewise in the residential. You know, when Dana was busy doing Dublink, he wasn't picking among the choices that were available to him, he was making a new one. And I think that's what we continue to want to do in the residential space as well as, you know, we don't want Spectrum to come and say, we can do A, B, or C for you. If those aren't the best options, I want us to continue to press into them.
Yeah, and set that goal, because I think that was our intent, right?
Yep.
So, does someone want to propose some language?
Yeah, I'd appreciate it if you would. I was just going to chime in and say...
I mean, we need to be specific here.
Please give us the language.
I mean, if you guys agree with that, I wrote that really what we're trying to do in number two is to create a smart city future vision and strategy, a smart city future vision and strategy, including world-leading broadband connectivity for residents and businesses. I mean, it's not, it doesn't stop at broadband, but it's an enabler.
Right, well, may I chime in on that?
Yes, please.
I, I'm a real jaded guy, and the staff knows this, when we talk about smart cities. I really believe, I'll give you my quick speech, I think smart cities is cliche, I think it's already old, and I think you need to leapfrog it.
Okay, so give us a word.
So, well, I think what you said on the back end of that is where you need to be. You said it yourself, this is the enabler of that to happen. And I, as, and we've been talking about this, a lot about this at the Smart Region Task Force, about smart region, but it's really about the digitization of infrastructure that enables you to do that, and it's the leveraging of technology. Without being premier broadband, and this is really the focus on that, all those other things can't happen. So really, the focus is the greatest connectivity, you know, whatever the back end of that statement was. I only caution around smart cities because that, we all kind of get what it is, but no one can, that's like pinning Jell-O to a wall, no one can really understand, and I don't mean that sarcastically, I'm just saying, we've had this discussion rounded around a staff level and at the region about smart cities and what it means, there's no good definitions around that. So, I think what we really want to focus on is the enabling of that, and then the, how that sets up technology for the long run, that's all.
So what if we put a comma where there's a period and added a sentence like that? The intention being, what was the first thing you said?
And so I said, create a smart city future, but you could change that if you don't like that language. I use it only because it is the vernacular of the world today.
It is the big thing going on, I guess.
Right, advanced connectivity.
Yeah. Create a city vision and strategy for advanced connectivity.
So Dana's saying we have to use broadband to further this goal, and you're saying you want to talk about what happens after broadband?
I want to say to what end? I want us to say, and I want the residents to realize that we're doing, that there's a purpose for this, right? We have a bold vision here that says, if we want to be smart city-enabled, whatever that right technology is, we're going to have to do some of this, but that's the end game. The end game is not to connect, the end game is to leapfrog what we can do with infrastructure, data, technology. That's really what we're trying to do with both two and three, and I think we should be bold in how we say it.
Say what you just said.
And high speed, what did you say?
Oh, heck, I don't know. And what did I say?
I appreciate where you're trying to go, and I'm all about. I think it's great.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. I just don't want to get too hung up on the smart cities thing, because that's all.
No, I would agree, the smart cities isn't part of it, but I would want to, to me, I just, I don't want to rely on options that are available. We want to go past the options that are available to us, we want to, you know, be...
You know, maybe this warrants a little bit more thought, because we had a great session last week on this.
We did.
And we can go back and rethink this one a little bit.
So we know what we're saying here. I'm just, let's rise up. And then the last one, really the goal is to deliver, you know, better service through better technology and better analytics, right? We live in a world where we can use data to really drive better, more efficient, more connected, so rise up the why, because we want to, you know, we want to use better data and analytics to deliver continuously better services and safety, so however we want to say that.
So we maybe work on language between now and May 6th and come back on May 6th?
I mean, I'm okay to pass it and then work on this language, however we want to do it, but I'm not trying to hold it up by any stretch of the imagination. I just, again, I think... Push us.
Yeah. I think we can bring it back. We're already working on these, and as council knows, these are coming before you as part of your work session, so we can take another stab at this.
I would hesitate to pass it, knowing we're going to change it.
Okay.
I mean, that seems...
All right.
I don't want to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
We'll hold off on the report.
I appreciate the boldness. We'll get bold. We'll get back. That's good.
Get bold, gentlemen. Resolution 25-19, Anne.
This is authorizing the city manager to enter into a general maintenance agreement with ODOT for the I-27033 interchange upgrade project.
Can we, Dana, the retreat part, will that come back with it? Because they're kind of...
Yes.
I'm sorry, say it again.
She had two different documents, the retreat part and the goal part. We'll just bring it together.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Sorry.
You prefer that, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, Anne.
Greg, you want to introduce them?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Megan?
Good evening, members of council. The city and ODOT have been working to finalize and close out the 27033 improvements project, which includes the landscaping and irrigation elements and various punch list items. Early in the design process, Dublin requested unique enhancement features to be incorporated into the plan, including the retaining wall and bridge patterns and colors, landscaping, irrigation, and overhead sign support painting in the Dublin bronze. It was agreed at that time that Dublin would be responsible for the costs and maintenance associated with these enhancement features. A general maintenance agreement has been prepared to document maintenance responsibilities and details, and that's attached to this legislation. Pursuant to the maintenance agreement that is before council, Dublin agrees to maintain the aesthetic features that were added to the project at Dublin's request, and ODOT would be required to maintain the interchange as required by the Ohio Revise Code, including all structural repairs, and they would also be responsible for replacing or reinstalling any of the aesthetic features if they were to be impacted by an ODOT-sponsored project. Staff recommends approval of resolution, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
Just one. It's such an extensive landscape, not, I mean, we're going to maintain it all, but the landscape down there that was so extensive, how difficult has that been to maintain?
So, that, those plantings have been under warranty via the ODOT contract, so that's why we're bringing the maintenance agreement to you at the... why we're bringing the maintenance agreement to you at this time, is because those warranties have now expired. But, it has been challenging. Matt can speak more to that, along with the next resolution, I believe.
Yeah, I just wonder how, it was so beautifully done, but is it doable to keep that up? I mean, and what are our options when, I know this doesn't exactly apply to this, but it's been one of those things where you look at it and you think, "How in the world do we ever maintain something that intricate in that?" Do we have options to change it around if necessary?
We don't, you know, we don't have a lot of experience maintaining it right now. I know while he's, while Matt's coming up, we experienced a lot of, we observed a lot of difficulty and gave a lot of feedback to ODOT before we would take it over on their getting this in place and going, to the point that there was a lot of, some redo work done and so forth before we would take it on. And certainly, I think the city knew going into this, it was going to be a pretty significant undertaking to maintain, but nonetheless, that was part of what, you know, the branded image that the city wanted to maintain. But, I would just add that answer to that last question, I'll let Matt take over, is we always reserve the right, once we have it, to modify.
You can change it. You can modify it, so it's easier.
Been there, done that one before.
Yeah, okay.
All I can add to that is, the bid specifications that we put out for the contract maintenance of that area has unit pricing in it for that very purpose, so that we can do emergency repairs, we have cars that are running into trees, we have debris that's in the roadway, things like, or in the landscaping area that damages plants and things of that sort. If we find something's not working, the unit cost allows us to change things around as needed.
Matt, it seemed like a lot of the loss you had in those areas might have been related to drainage. Have we had the opportunity to verify that, A, that the drainage was designed to in fact drain? There's not many places you could take that water, because it's about the lowest spot. But, to verify that the drainage system was put in per specification, is it functioning as it was designed to do?
To the extent that it's physically possible, yes. To that extent, yeah, we, that's one area, that's a great example, that we did have to come up with an alternative plant that would be subject to those types of conditions, and they seem to be doing well at this point.
We've also had the wetter season on record to monitor through the last.
Until next year.
That's true. Wait a minute, no, this is that 1,000-year rain, isn't it? So, anyway, but yeah, I think we'd have a good handle on where some of those areas that haven't been performing particularly well.
Anything else from council?
Megan, I have a question for you. When you go underneath the bridge, is there a possibility that ODOT would allow us to either use complementary colors or analogous colors to paint in the word Dublin? Some cities have huge signs that you're passing through them over the freeway. Worthington would be one of them. And, you know, we were talking about doing that about two years ago, when our arts aide moved to another city. Is there a possibility that ODOT would let us color those in, so you at least see that you're passing through Dublin? Because it says Dublin, it's imprinted up on the bridge, but it's the same color as the bridge, and you hardly even notice that you're moving through it.
I believe that Sean explored that option with ODOT last year. I remember there being discussion. I can follow up on that, though.
Yeah, let me, yeah, let us know.
Yeah, there are cities around that have done that.
Yeah, you've got a beautiful group of roads with landscaping and really extensively done, but if you're just moving through the area and you're coming up from another place, from Kentucky or God knows where, you wouldn't know that you passed through Dublin.
My recollection from when that design was being vetted was that the goal was that it be more subtle rather than calling out Dublin, but that's something that we can look into.
Even if it was a different shade of the same color.
Right.
I think there was talk of concrete staining at one point in time that wasn't going to involve paint, but it was, because I don't think we should paint in it.
There actually is stain. Wherever there is the artwork or the impression or the form liners, that is, that concrete does have staining.
And what is the maintenance of that concrete stain? So, you know, like concrete pavers and all of those kinds of things, they lose color over time, because concrete doesn't, you know, retain much color. So, do we, is part of the maintenance package to include, you know, some program of staining those?
Over time, we would need to. I believe that it seeps into the concrete about a quarter inch, but over time, as it would, starts to fade, that would be the city's maintenance responsibility to refresh in that if we have a desire to.
Sometimes, if you stain something and then you seal it, that helps hold the color in a little better, make it a little bit brighter without having to, you know, go down the green paint route.
Yep.
Yeah, let us know, really, because it's interesting to pass through Dublin and not know you've passed through Dublin.
We can take a look at that.
Thank you.
Ann.
Ms. Fox, Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Resolution 26-19.
Authorizing the lowest and best bid for the 270-33 interchange maintenance contract, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the project.
I will introduce it. Matt?
Thank you, mayor, members of council. Good evening. Resolution 2619 is complementary to the previous resolution. It is for the I-270-33 interchange maintenance contract. Our 2019 operating budget includes $155,000 of funds available. Tuesday, on April the 9th, bids were open, two bids were received. The lowest bid was $81,000 from CLMS. This is lower than the estimate. There are some reasons for that, one of which is there's a small portion of the landscaping that has not yet been turned over to the city, we have not accepted. And to Megan's points in her memo in your packet, it also includes some punch items we're waiting on completion. The bid specs also did require, as I mentioned earlier, that the bidders to provide a unit cost associated with the work. That allows us to adapt to the remaining maintenance needs and make adjustments along the way, as I alluded to earlier, to make sure that we achieve the desired appearance. So, with that, staff recommends approval of resolution 2619. I'll be happy to answer any more questions.
Questions from council. Hearing none. Ann.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Ludo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Resolution 27-19.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2019 sidewalk maintenance program.
Paul.
Members of council, on April 2nd of this year, four bids were received and opened for the 2019 sidewalk maintenance program. The program this year includes work at various locations throughout the city, as staff looks to concentrate on locations of higher pedestrian traffic, such as schools and parks. The engineer's estimate for this project is $235,000. The budgeted funds in the capital improvements program from account AT-186 Annual Sidewalk Program were $250,000. The majority of the bids received were higher than the estimate, with the exception of the low bidder. Staff has determined this is likely due to the unknown amount of work involved with the, to trim and prune tree roots, coupled with the size of the area over which the work is dispersed, and this has been somewhat consistent in the past with this project. Newcomer Concrete Services submitted the lowest and best bid of $215,300. As in the past, the majority of the sidewalk repair locations are caused by roots from mature trees heaving the sidewalks. As part of this repair process, these roots will be pruned and removed. Engineering staff does work closely with Dublin forestry staff on the sidewalk repair process to ensure the impact of trees will be minimized where feasible. And actually, in last year's program, we really had minimal impact to trees, so we were very fortunate. Staff anticipates the initial construction activities to begin sometime next month, in May, with the completion date of September 20th of 2019. We will use our typical communication methods with impacted residents, which would be flyers, individual contact by our engineering project inspector, our webpage, and certainly our social media channels. Our previous experience with Newcomer Concrete Services has been certainly favorable, most recently on the Mid-Century Project. With that, staff recommends council approval of this resolution, accepting as lowest and best, a bid of Newcomer Concrete Services in the amount of $215,300. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions from council.
Yes, on this Earth Day, I appreciate that you're not taking those trees down.
Where feasible.
Where feasible. So, you said you've made a lot of progress in that in the last year. Can you give us some?
It's honestly just situational. It really just depends, once you remove the sidewalk panel, where the roots are, how many are impacted. Sometimes, there's several roots near the surface, sometimes, there's just one. So, it really comes down to how much root removal happens, and that really, forestry staff takes a look at that, determines the stability of the tree, the percent of removal compared to the size of the tree.
Yeah, I know, last year when we talked through this is, and I had some taken out of my cul-de-sac, so this is near and dear to my heart, as you know. So, that you're doing things like canopy pruning, and you're doing some different things. So, I'm hoping those are bearing fruit?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right?
And I think the other is, what the forestry staff is, over time, our experience at locations where we have done root pruning, there was concerns about tree stability, and, you know, we really haven't had a tree blow or fall over at those locations. So, it gives us some experience, too, in terms of the amount of roots that can be removed, but we are conservative and cautious about that.
Good, because I know how much residents appreciate that. And then, one final question. I know last year, we said sort of a catch-up year, right? There were a lot of requests and.
Correct.
We sort of gotten through those, and as I recall, then the goal now was to do very much like street maintenance, but there would be quadrants. But, I heard a little bit of a different.
Yeah, this year, we really, we, again, focused on the high pedestrian traffic areas, and then we'll start to transition into the quadrants and more uniformly around the city, similar to the street maintenance program.
So, then residents can know, you know, this period is going to be my.
Correct.
So, you're still taking requests, or how are we dealing with that if residents have abstained and not here?
We still give requests.
So, it's still doing.
We keep an inventory.
So, some of this is high traffic, but if residents have requests, they can put that on the list? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, and we have capacity. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Does this include the concrete shaving as well?
Yes.
It does, okay. I would like to highlight, in the conference and the training update, is that we sent several people to the Ohio Tree Conference, and they took a number of classes on urban forestry. So, hopefully, they picked up some good tips on how to make those trees survive.
Regarding the shaving, you know, what's remaining of the budgeted funds will go towards shaving, and that's really consistent with what we've done in the past.
Anything else from council? Hearing nothing. Ann.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Ludo.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. And under the other portion of our agenda, pedestrian bridge opening event and dedication. Dana?
Yes, members of council, in your packet was a memo from staff regarding pedestrian bridge opening event and dedication. Just wanted to get this before you, to get your early input and be thinking about some of the things you might want to do with this, so that we can be planning ahead. I don't really, I'm not really suggesting we have to solve this tonight or have all the ideas generated tonight, but that we are thinking about this. Actually, we have been thinking about it for a while, but want to, you know, certainly invite any guidance or input you have on that. We also mentioned the notion of naming the bridge, not that you need to do that or have to do that, but just wanted to lift that up as, if that's something you wanted to address or not, or, you know, just kind of wait and address that another day. Another day, not meaning tonight, but down the road sometime. So, whatever is your pleasure, just wanted to get this in front of you.
Have we done commemorative things before on openings? It talks about having a commemorative, what was the phrase? Commemorative ceremonial, commemorative gifts. Is that something we've done before?
I think we have. I'm trying to remember the specific example of that. Seems like, I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to look at what those examples might be. We've handed little wooden.
It's like a miniature street.
Oh, yeah, we, that's, I knew that we had little, little things we handed out. So, there was one of the park dedications, there was a, to Dublin, and I forget, I had one in my office a long time. It was like a mile marker type thing, and we handed it out to people when they came. So, it seems like there was another one, though, that, but those go way back in time, so you're really pushing me on that one. I can't think back that far.
Hey, Chris, I was thinking of those, you know, how you get the Eiffel Towers on the keychains?
Yes.
That's what went through my mind. I'm thinking, what would we do? How would, I can't imagine what that would be.
Probably before we do that, we'd run that by you, so, but.
So, what would you want us to do tonight? I mean, is that?
Well, I just wanted you to be aware, I just wanted you to be aware that we're thinking this through, and we welcome your ideas and any suggestions you have. And we can, like I said, you can send us some emails with some thoughts, certainly welcome those from the public as well. And what we would do is take a look at what came in and try to come up with some idea, you know, take the ideas and try to come back to you with, here's a proposed idea on how to do this.
I think it might be important to know when that might be, because if it's January, we might do things a little differently than we would do in September.
I was just, well, exactly, and I was just going to say, timing is everything, and we already know it's going to be at least the late fall, early December, if everything keeps going, as it's going, but we also know, not everything keeps going when it's going, you know, with construction. So, I'm not, I would never sit here and promise that. You know, it could be, too, that you could do a soft opening and really do a celebration when the weather's better. I mean, there's that option as well. So, I don't want you to think you're, you have to be pinned down on a day in time, if you'd rather celebrate in another way, we can certainly, certainly do that. So, any and all options are pretty much on the table, so.
This is such a big deal for the city, everybody's looking forward to it, that, and there's so much public conversation about it. I know, like Dublin bridges, that's all I can think about, is how they can participate in that. It wouldn't be a bad idea to have a little public conversation and have, let people.
What if we referred it to a committee?
I think that's called collaboration. Write that down, collaboration.
Or CSAT.
I mean, I think that public would have, would enjoy throwing ideas at us, and then, I like the idea, you could celebrate this for a whole year. I mean, you could celebrate a soft opening, you can have an event all year long and incorporate a lot of things, but I would love to hear what some of the nonprofits, what everybody, it'd be nice to have a big table conversation about this, too.
Well, I think the more appropriate time to really do that sort of thing is when the park opens, you know, when you have some real estate to do something with. I mean, you know, right now, we're pretty, going to be pretty limited for a while.
I don't know, I think the park opening's going to be exciting in itself. I think it's going to be another major event when we open up the River Park. I sort of agree that this is probably the monumental thing that I've seen in this city for the last 40 years.
Short of the rec center, maybe?
Yeah, short of the rec center. This is the biggest, most interesting, this will be the icon that our city's going to be remembered by and seen by other places. This is it. This bridge is going to be the monumental symbol for the community.
Well, why don't we refer this to community development and have them flush this out?
Sure, I mean, if that's something you'd be willing to take on, I think it's a great idea.
We'd love it.
Good man.
Yeah, and I think what we're saying is get as much involvement as we can, because this is, this is the community's park, this is the community's bridge, so getting as much involvement as we can, and we have time, right?
Some.
Sort of.
Remember, there's all that backward planning, we got to get, so, I'd say we probably have 60, 90 days to get a plan in place, so that we could at least know what we need to be we need to be doing.
You know, we did grounds of remembrance, we opened it up to committee. We probably had 30 folks, anywhere from World War II veterans to Desert Storm.
Sure.
And I want to tell you, it was, it was a very, very difficult task, keeping everybody on point, and at the end of the day, we had a number of people that were pretty upset that their ideas weren't adopted. Not to say that you, you don't, or you should not get input, but be careful what you ask for, because it can be very, very difficult, and you can have a lot of disappointment coming out of a committee, so.
Well, we got to make the decision somewhere.
Yeah, but the idea of having a, a actual bridge opening with a ribbon cutting, regardless of the temperature, is, I think, important, and having probably a community party to celebrate this.
I think you have to do that. John, I sent an email today that said, you know, we've been closing down at Bridge Park that, that road, and there's parking there, like for the farmer's market. You could do a gathering there, there's plenty of space, they do it all the time, you know, maybe you start, and the issue is, both sides of the river, there's not adequate space at the landings. So if you found a space there, or the upper Darby lot, where you close Darby lot off altogether and do a gathering there, move all the traffic into the new garage, you could do it on one side or the other and move them around, but, you know, the Bridge Park piece, we could maintain traffic and have people walk across and do their, cross the bridge from the east side to the west to go to, you know, to historic Dublin.
We even did that once with the, it was the Emerald Parkway Bridge over 33, where we had people on both sides and carried American flag across and celebrated an opening-
They did something like that with the 161 bridge.
That'd be neat to set a flag there in the center. They'll probably, will they do a topping out when they do the cables, do you think, or? I know they do it for the steel, but that could be kind of a cool thing if you, well, you can get up there.
She's been up there. We want her to not be getting up there anymore, that's-
She tried to get me up there, I said, no. I know what she was thinking.
You know, the, Christina and I was up with Dr. Hoadley on top of the parking garage. That is a really huge, great space for a party sometime. I'm not saying for this, but it's really a neat space, and it's got a great panoramic view over the old city, out towards the river, the new library, very neat space.
And of course, you know, there are others who have different, differing opinions on that, so.
Well, perhaps, Mayor, we could ask for input, maybe via email or what have you, and that will help shape the conversation at the committee level, and then we can go from there, and staff can present some thoughts and ideas along the, right here is a great example of how, you know, some good ideas get spun up and-
So do we need a motion to refer, I make a motion that we refer the opening bridge dedication ceremony issue to our Community Development Committee.
I'll second it.
Why don't we make sure that we put the provisos in there that, you know, it's, it's for study and input, obviously, that's not that, not that it's going to be the end of all ends.
Well, then they report back to council.
Agreed. I just want to make it clear, though, that we don't create disappointment after they go through a process, and the timing on this is, I said, grounds of remembrance was supposed to be a year, I think we were better, part of two and a half, three years before it got done, with that committee. That's how long it took to get everybody on. You remember, John, you were on the-
Oh, God, yeah. And you know what, on this, too, this, you know, even though this is a committee, I think it's going to be compilation of all the letters, input, and information that comes in from the citizenry on this idea. If it was London Bridge, the old one, they dedicated it with a joust, I think it's probably out of vogue right now, but I'm sure we'll come up with something great.
Ah, we can do that.
No jousting, no dueling, none of that.
Okay, so motion, a second.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amber Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Staff comments, Dana?
Yes, I only have one item, the other memo that was in your packet relative to the new City Hall Council Chambers addition project, and this was presented by Megan O'Callaghan and Brian Ashford, and what we're asking for, for the design of the, as you know, we have selected an architect. Thank you to Mayor and Vice Mayor for participating in that process. That process is done, now we're moving into the design side of the addition, and would like to know if council wants to be, wants to have representatives on that process as well. I think we're suggesting, well, you can't go with four members, because then you're having a public meeting every time, but not that we won't have public input, too, through the process as well, I would imagine you'd want to do that, but we're suggesting two or three members of council to serve on that committee, and again, that's primarily addressing the addition. I do want to say that, as we have been looking at the capital budget, we're going to be coming forward with the notion of trying to lean forward more on getting the renovation of the existing building done faster towards the back end of this year and early quarter of next year, in order that we can get the 5800 building sold and get, get the move going a little bit quicker. So I'll be back before you on that issue separately, but I think the renovations of the existing building are not as complex as the addition, so we can move quicker with that as kind of a phase one, and then the addition, and we'll lay all that out for you. But the key is, do you want to have any representatives involved in that, that design?
Before we ask that question, do you know about how much time commitment that would entail? Chris and I met, what, twice? We had two different waves of interviews and whatnot. How much time would this entail?
Initially, and for the first few months, we're thinking maybe an hour every other week, and then we will be able to back off on that a little bit, and then we'll also need to talk about whether we would do nighttime meetings or daytime meetings for that, too. But initially, every other week, about an hour.
I would like to continue to serve-
Okay, we have one volunteer and another volunteer.
I'd like to. I love architecture, I love space planning, so yes, I would like to volunteer.
Chris, we have Jane, anybody else want to volunteer? All right, I'll volunteer.
Excellent, thank you.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, we will, yes, thank you.
I move that Jane Gregg and I serve on the new council chamber addition.
That's a paying position, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
You'll get at least one-
We'll pay overtime.
Bottle of water.
Pay overtime for them.
Then I'm all for it. Yeah.
You'll leave the pack, I'm sure.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amber Rose Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Thank you, that's all I have, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Committee reports, P and Z, Jane?
We met April 11th, and we had a professional development session provided by legal and planning staff, which was very helpful. We discussed review of PUDs, and I think it really is helpful, especially to new members of the commission. And then ARB and planning and zoning are working together with staff to begin to suggest some new resources to enhance our professional development, and we'll be bringing those back to council. We meet again on May 2nd with another educational session, so we're working hard to be good.
Thank you, Jane. Admin, Chris?
Okay. We had our reviews, we had all the documents, Dana and, and submitted them to you, and they were in your last packet. I have not seen any emails regarding them, hearing nothing. I'm assuming that we are okay to move forward to submit those to HR, unless there is any comments outstanding, but we are nearly a month away from that time, so we need to close the loop.
Speak now or forever hold your peace.
Very good, Homer, you can expect to see those tomorrow.
Anything else?
That's all.
Community development, John?
We have a May 8th meeting, strangely enough, at 1:00 PM, so Chris and Kathy, looking forward to seeing you there, and topics are too lengthy and boring to list right now, so.
Well, we just added one for you.
Thank you.
Finance, Chris, or, I'm sorry, Mike?
Anne's put together a list, proposed committee meeting dates, and there's a number that, number of them that are relevant to finance, so keep your eye on that.
Public services, Christina?
We did not meet until June 5th.
Cota, Kathy?
Yes, thank you. So not only is it Earth Day, but it's also New Flyer Bus Day, if you're on Cota. So Cota has ordered and has had delivery of some sort of next-generation CNG buses, and emphasis on technology, so there are USB charging ports at every seat and Wi-Fi and a variety of things. So you're going to see those cool-looking new buses around town, so hop on one.
Thank you, Kathy. Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
We have not met.
Morpsy, Chris?
Yeah, Dana and I received some information from them regarding the, this additional $5 permissive license fee, that gave some estimated totals of what that would mean if that was a lever that we decided to pull. For us, it was about $24,500. You know, we're going to have to have some discussion of whether or not we're prepared to pull that lever, because it, you know, it is not something that goes to the ballot or anything, that is just something that we pass that would raise additional dollars for roadway maintenance and improvements, you know, apart from having something fixed that this would go to, you know, we would need to think long and hard of it, and maybe it would be a, some leverage we might use in order to partnership with neighboring jurisdictions, some of whom have zero permissive fees. We are already at $20, 15, $20 right now. This permits us to take it to 25, but we have neighbors that don't charge anything, so I, I think my recommendation would be that we would keep that powder dry, and we would try to raise those funds to partner with our neighboring jurisdictions on some roadway improvements that might be necessary. So, but give it some thought, if, you know, we're going to have to address it in one way or another here in short order. I will go ahead and circulate this spreadsheet to all of you, so you have the data of what it would raise for us in our neighboring jurisdictions.
One thing I might add to that, if you don't mind, is I think we owe you some more information, too, on the shakeout of the-
Gas tax.
The gas tax and what that means, and there are a lot of subtleties, or few subtleties in that. I think we kind of answered that for you, but we were going to do a little bit more, did we provide all, okay, the memo was in the packet, covered all that, so, sorry about that. We already did that, she's so far ahead of me, but anyway, never mind.
So the current, the bulk of the $20 in, in permissive tax, how is that allocated today? Is that part of the general?
No, that comes directly to us, that is something that we-
I'm sorry, what do we do with it today?
Oh.
The uses of it today?
It gets distributed in the same manner as the gas tax does, so 92.5% goes into our state, or our street maintenance and repair fund, the other 7.5% goes to the state highway fund. So you, you could duplicate the memo that was in your packet exactly for the motor vehicle license.
But this wouldn't have to necessarily be distributed that way if we did this additional portion, would it have to be distributed identically to what we have done previously? Or could we earmark it for a project?
I don't know about that.
That would be a good answer to get, if, if we could, you know, and then maybe we could partner with some neighboring jurisdictions, and they could go from zero to even 10, perhaps, and, and then we might be able to build partnerships. If we had the ability earmark, if not, that would be far more difficult to do, but not impossible, but perhaps more difficult. That's all I have about Morpsy.
Okay. Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
Nothing, thank you.
How about the US 33 Innovation Corridor Group?
Kathy and I both attended that, so I'll give a little piece, and she can, she can share some of what she has, too. We continue to discuss the development of 33 corridor protection overlay. Primarily, they looked at use regulations that encourage better development along that 33 corridor. Most of the things that they were recommended were determined to be legable, legally doable. The development standards of architectural design and landscape, landscaping's are more challenging for townships, though, so they're continuing to pursue what they're able to do to make the aesthetics along the 33 corridor in that overlay legally doable and create this cohesive look that will make that an attractive roadway, so we're still working on that. But a lot of good partnerships, a lot of good conversation around it.
Yeah, yeah, good kind of partnership. The other couple of things that we talked about at this last meeting is, in conjunction with the smart cities, the smart corridor, what other types or elements of transportation, and we talked a little bit about public transportation and increasing needs up and down that corridor. So currently, the those, that particular stretch is not in Cota's service envelope, if you will, but there's some really interesting desires for some employers, including some big employers up there as we continue. So we talked a little bit about innovating in public transportation and adding that as an ongoing item. And the other thing that we talked about is the recognition of all the things that are happening around that corridor and continued demands for support on some of the roadways up and down that, including Highland Crowe. So continued discussion of how do we, through smaller groups or other conversations, think about both public transportation and auxiliary roadway? So those are going to be continued items on, on that, with that group, and excited to do that. So again, we're seeing some innovative partnerships, I think, opportunities there that, that are pretty interesting, so, good group, thank you.
Great, thank you. Dublin Arts Council, John?
Yeah, the Big Federation is coming up, May 3rd, and annually, it raises about $40,000. And if you haven't ever gone to this, there's 18 restaurants represented, and some really great travel packages to Cuba, to Viking River Cruises, there's some really neat things going on in the auction department. And they have a interesting thing, if you haven't attended, they have a $50 first-time attendee fee, which is a great deal. And if you've got six friends, the tickets are $500, and if you want to buy a corporate sponsorship, there's 14 tickets for $1,000, so really great food and on a wonderful night, and a lot of wonderful auction items, so hope to see you all there the night of May 3rd. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Board of Education, Christina?
We met with the schools, and Dana and Angel were there as well. We talked a lot about the upcoming elementary schools and middle school, and how excited they are about the construction, and what else did we talk about?
That's pretty much it. We talked a lot about upcoming construction.
We did.
Because they, you know, they just cut the ribbon on a couple of schools and cooperation with all that. It's good dialogue.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Washington Township, Chief Eric, my friend Eric, you guys got anything with the good of the order? Dublin Bridges, Jane?
We were kindly hosted by Cardinal Health for our meeting with Dublin Bridges. We actually have a Cardinal Health personnel on our steering committee now.
It's fantastic.
So we, we really were looking at what has happened in this, in the past 15, 16 months. It's important to note, the Dublin Bridges averages support to six, six and a half children in residence every day of the year.
Wow.
And then also, I don't know if you know this or not, but Dublin Bridges has installed personal care pantries. These are available to the nurses and the counselors. There are a lot of children that come in to, students that come in, and they don't have personal care things at home, or they need something. And Dublin Bridges has, through the support of this community, installed personal care pantries and restocked them all the time in every school in Dublin. So there's, they're doing amazing work. All I can tell you is that the kindness here in Dublin is overwhelmingly generous, so.
Can you donate out of school, or do you go through the Bridges website?
You go through Bridges, and, and one of the ways you can do it, and it's a simple way to do it, is you can just get on and you can just donate $5 a month, and that can be used towards a personal care pantry, and you'll know that every student is, is given everything from, you just, just name what you would need for personal care, and it's available. And I will tell you that the feedback from this, from the schools, they can't thank you enough, because it's just one of those things that's anonymously given, and a student comes in, and if they need it, it's just there for them. So it's a beautifully generous community, makes you feel good about it, so.
Fantastic, thanks, Jane. We will stay with you for roundtable.
Oh, roundtable?
Yep.
I don't have very much, except that I, that one thing came up, I've been getting a couple of calls from, I think Dana, maybe Tom Holton has told you, that he's concerned about, the Historic Society is concerned about some of the properties that the city owns that are historic and the maintenance of them. And so, you know, I would lift up to council that we own, we own quite a few historic properties and barns and structures in Dublin, and they are not on Appendix G, they're not protected like we protect our historic district properties and our stone walls, which are now being under the, under the ARB review. And I would ask council that if we, if we can ask our private citizens to maintain and preserve their historic structures, I think it's important that as a city, we also put our own structures that we own on Appendix G, so that they can also be guarded and preserved for the future, and that we can find ways to, you know, make sure that they're protected. I know that we do, we utilize many of our historic structures, but I think it's important that we set an example of how we care for and, and maintain. So Dana, I would like to know what you have to say about that.
Yeah, I think we do a great job maintaining them, but I, I'm really caught off guard that it's not on the list, so let me, let me, let me check that and get back to you why that might be.
Yeah, I don't think many of them are. I think many of them aren't, and I don't really know how many the city owns, how many historic barns and structures we own.
Yeah, I'll get you a list, and I, I do know that we, and like the stone wall maintenance maintenance and so forth, you know, we're, we're putting constant line item in that so that we're-
Right.
Doing a little bit over time, right?
Right.
Keeping up with that and repairs and so forth, as well as our, I know our structures are always in our facilities list, so we're always trying to keep up on maintenance with those. But we'll get back to you.
Yeah, it would be, it would be good.
I appreciate you asking that.
And if they're not on Appendix G, I would hope that we put them there, so. That's all.
Thanks, Jane. Kathy?
Let's see. Christina, Chris and I have the opportunity on Saturday to be part of the Community Champion Awards, which recognizes outstanding students and teachers. And it's just, it just warms your heart. I, you, you talk about generous community. It starts, I think, in, in kindergarten. They were recognizing people. So, it, it was an incredibly terrific event. And I congratulate Vice Mayor Grooms, who was the keynote speaker, and she did a great job, talking about having been a student, and, and look where she is now, right? There you have it, on a Monday night at nine fifteen. Across the street. Across the street. No, it was wonderful. And I congratulate all the students and teachers. Then I just had one question. Dana, I saw the, the note on the census in the packet. And in there, it mentioned the creation of a, one of the city's responsibilities may include assigning a complete count committee. Could you share a little bit of background on how that process?
Right. Nancy and I met with the representative of the Census Bureau. He's the gentleman that is setting up this, this, the office to handle this region, which actually is gonna be based here in Dublin for the most part. It's a temporary office. It's in place for a certain amount of, a couple of years, I think it is, while they go through this process. When he met with us, he presented to us some ideas of things that you would want to do to promote census participation. So, in fact, Nancy has him scheduled to come before council, next meeting or two, during special presentations, to speak to you a few minutes about the census and the launch of it, and what's upcoming. And part of the recommendation is to have some sort of a, a committee that, you know, reaches out, it's obviously some city participation, but the schools, the library, various organizations throughout the city that can help bring ideas forward on how to promote participation in the census. So, that's what that committee's about. We will bring that back to you about the formation of that, but that's, that's the idea of it, so.
Great, thank you.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
John?
I'm just curious, you know, we keep using, is it the eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar figure for the night lighting, Megan? Is that it? For the lighting of the bridge?
Okay.
So, years ago, years ago, we brought up this issue, a long time ago. And we said, you know, we want this really to be spectacular at night. And, you know, we were talking about the Chinese and what they're doing, and all, with their kind of night lighting techniques. I guess, I'm just curious, you know, is that really adequate? We just seen, and do we need more money to make this thing as monumental as it should be at night? Because, okay, we just had twenty-five thousand dollars come back from the Bread Festival, which is an art project. And this definitely is a huge art project, lighting this bridge at night. So, are we, where are we at with that lighting part of the program? I meant to ask you last week, or last meeting, when we went through the bridge.
So, during the presentation that I gave, I believe it was at the last meeting, I showed a couple of renderings that show the illumination levels that we're striving for. And we're in the process of finalizing fixtures and controllers, because, you know, those are technologies that are constantly changing and being improved. So, since the design was complete over a couple of years ago now, there are new fixtures that have come out. So, we're evaluating them as we speak. We even had some emails on them today. We're waiting on one final fixture to come in. And then what we're gonna do is, we're gonna take a sample of each of the fixtures out to the bridge and shine it on the bridge, because there's nothing like seeing it actually in the field. It's difficult to tell from renderings and all that, what it's actually gonna look like in the end. So, we're in the process of vetting that. We're putting together pricing. I mean, at, as of this point, I believe it's sufficient to achieve the illumination that we're desiring. But like I said, we do have the allowance in there, and we still need to work through all the, the pricing details with Kocozin and their subcontractor.
I guess, my question is, is this really a fantastically beautifully lit bridge? Is this an adequately lit bridge? I mean, where's this fall in the spectrum of art and beauty and, and drama? I mean, I guess-
So, a few years ago, midway through design, we had an in-depth lighting conversation with council, and we presented different levels of packages of lighting. And I believe council had decided upon an intermediate level, which includes all of the elements that we had shown in the renderings at the last meeting. I believe it's gonna be beautiful. It provides for LED lighting. It provides for dimming capabilities, and also color-changing capabilities. So, all of the fixtures that'll be on the bridge will provide the opportunity for us to program different colors and light shows. I mean, there won't be movies or anything projected on the cables like there had been discussed at one point, but-
I brought up dancing leprechauns, and she couldn't care.
It's a significant amount of, it's a significant amount of lighting, and we are striving for it to be state-of-the-art.
So, it does cover all the support cables and that, that work?
Yes, there's, there's uplighting at the base of each cable that is planned. So, there would be two uplights at the base. So, it's called a color wash. So, it would be brighter at the bottom end of the cable, and then it would kind of fade out as it goes up the cables.
Okay. That's an interesting point, because I was just curious if the, the cables were all similarly lit, but we, that disappeared as an option, right?
There won't be lights-
Running from the cables?
Yeah, from top to bottom, but they'll just be uplighting on each cable. And that's what the rendering was shown. It's kind of, it's called a color wash, as we refer to it.
Okay. I don't know.
And then there, there's quite a few different fixtures planned for the main pylon and the-
Part of that, too. I think we learned early on with some limitation on, on being able to hang stuff on-
Yeah, that, that was another discussion we had in this chambers, was we were looking at the wind loading and the impact of wrapping light fixtures around each cable and the aesthetics during the day. And we had decided at that point not to wrap fixtures all the way around those cables, just because aesthetics during the day, and then also the effect on wind loading.
Okay. I was just sort of curious to see where we were at in this. Now, we're drawing closer-
We're in process, and we're getting-
To the finale. Yeah.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other topics?
That's it. Thank you.
Michael? Christina?
I just wanted to say congratulations to all the kids. It was great to see them all. Thanks to Dr. Hoadley for inviting us to spend some time with him on the groundbreaking for the schools. It was, it was great. People are pretty excited. Other than that, I'm good.
Chris?
Just wanted to, I appreciated the opportunity of speaking at the Community Champions, and we have a great bunch of kids doing some great things, and it's really encouraging. They're, they do a lot more than I did when I was in the fifth grade, let me tell you that much. So, they were inspiring, and it, it's, it's one of those really feel-good days of the year.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, last Friday was a big day. We started off, and most of us were there, for the groundbreaking with the schools. They had two of those a week ago Friday. Then we had, we should thank the Hadakas again for another successful cherry blossom lunch. They are just fantastic people and a fantastic company. And then we ended up opening up the garage. So, congratulations to everybody that really did the heavy lift to make sure that garage became a reality. And with that, we are adjourned.